...held Tuesday, March twenty-fourth. I would also like to welcome our viewers. In compliance with state and federal guidelines for gatherings during the COVID-nineteen emergency, the open session portion of this meeting has been made available for viewing via social media. With this being said, do I have a motion to reconvene to open session?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Lake?
Second.
Second by trustee O'Geehan. All in favor?
I need, I believe I need to do a roll call.
Roll call?
Dean.
And trustee Lake, aye. Trustee Haddock?
Yes.
Woolridge, yes.
O'Geehan, yes.
Motion passes. Would you like to?
Yes, uh, in talking with council, uh, because we promised the viewers, uh, a live situation, uh, we may ask the board to ratify all decisions that you make tonight at our next board meeting. So, we can go ahead with business, they may need to be, uh, they, they do need to be ratified, uh, again, in our April meeting. So, we'll bring one item to the board, and we'll say ratification of items presented at the March twenty-fourth, uh, board, regular board meeting, and call for a vote to ratify, uh, all items of business at that time. Okay, that's, uh, that's the fix-it. So.
Thank you, Dr. Silverberg. I will start by reading our mission statement. The Panama Buena Vista Union School District's mission is to partner with parents and community committing to a high-achieving, balanced academic program for all students resulting in twenty-first, responsible twenty-first century citizens. And in attendance tonight, this evening for governing board members, we have myself, trustee Greg White, serving as president. We also have trustee Shariel O'Geehan, serving as vice president, trustee Keith Woolridge, trustee John P. Lake, and trustee Dr. Dean Haddock. And Dr. Haddock is in attendance via, via FaceTime and participating as trustee. Dr. Haddock is self-quarantined not to be exposed to and not to expose others based on the national emergency as recommended by the California Board of Psychology. And I am able to see Dr. Haddock's votes via FaceTime as he participates in tonight's meeting. Staff members in attendance tonight, we have Dr. Kevin Silverberg, Dr. Pam Bianchi, superintendent, assistant superintendent of Instructional Services, Mr. Glenn Imke, assistant superintendent of Business Services, and Ms. Kinkade, assistant superintendent of Educational Services, and Mr. Daryl Johnson, assistant superintendent of Human Resources. Moving on to guests, due to the COVID-nineteen concerns, the guestbook, uh, is not available at tonight's meeting. And moving on to minutes, nine, eight minutes from the emergency meeting held March fourteenth, twenty-twenty, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by trustee Woolridge?
Second.
Second by trustee O'Geehan. Roll call. Start with trustee Lake at the end, please.
Yes.
Dr. Haddock?
Yes.
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 Motion passes. Moving on to nine B, minutes from the special meeting held March fourteenth, twenty-twenty, do I have a motion?
So moved, Mr. President.
Motion by trustee O'Geehan.
Second.
Second by trustee Lake. Roll call. Start.
Trustee Lake, yes.
Dr. Haddock?
Yes.
Woolridge, yes.
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving on to nine C, minutes from the regularly scheduled meeting held March tenth, twenty-twenty, do I have a motion?
Will we approve as submitted?
Motion by trustee Lake?
Second.
Second by trustee O'Geehan. Roll call.
Lake is a yes.
Dr. Haddock?
Yes.
Woolridge is a yes?
Yes.
Motion passes. Ten, correspondence hearings, delegations.
Excuse me, uh, Mr. President?
Oh, good.
Since we skipped the flag salute and I was scheduled to lead it tonight, I would like to, uh, get that piece in.
We're, we're starting a new, uh, normal. Those who are on their way out the back door are gonna be leading the flag salutes the next couple of meetings. And so, uh, just saying, those that are sitting in the front row, uh, you'll have your big chance, beginning with Patty tonight will lead the pledge. And that will include some of us in the room, too, in the coming months.
Please stand. Salute, pledge.
Aye. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir.
Moving on to correspondence hearings, delegations, and presentations. KCSOS correspondence regarding Kern County Honor Music Festival. And I have a letter here addressed to Ms. Amy McGuire of our Visual and Performing Arts Department, uh, from the Kern County Superintendent of Schools. And it reads, Dear Amy, just a note to say congratulations on another great concert at the annual performance of the Kern County Honor Music Festival. A special thank you for your participation in coordinating the planning and logistics with the chairpersons in your capacity as coordinator of Visual and Performing Arts for the Panama Buena Vista Union School District. And it goes on a little bit further, and it's signed by Dr. Mary C. Barlow of the Kern County Superintendent of Schools. As we all know, we appreciate all of Ms. Amy McGuire's efforts throughout all these years. Moving on to ten B, public hearing for school facilities needs analysis. The, the time has been set aside to hear public comment regarding the approval and adoption of the school facilities needs analysis, SFNA. The district's SFNA has been made available for public inspection since February twenty-second, twenty-twenty, as required by government code section six-five-nine-nine-five-six. We will give, for, we will give time for any public comment this evening. No public comment this evening regarding that. Uh, we will not be taking a brief recess this evening, so we have enough time to cover all of tonight's items. And at this time, we will be moving to public comment. Due to the public health and safety and other COVID-nineteen issues, anyone wishing to address the board on any item listed on the agenda may do so by sending a text to the following district phone number, six-six-one-three-zero-four-five-one-zero-six. Again, that's six-six-one-three-zero-four-five-one-zero-six. While the meeting is in session, the text should include the name of the sender and the item to be addressed. And we will take a few minutes to allow those of you to text your comments regarding any agenda item for tonight's meeting.
All right, here are our public comments, and I'll take them as they've come in. I think the cutoff time, Madam Secretary, was seven oh five?
Right, that's correct.
So I'm beginning now to, well, they end, that's where I'll start. To whom it may concern, I am extremely concerned about the inclusion of an LGBT agenda in the curriculum for elementary school children. I am requesting that the expression of freedom and equality be extended to parents who wish to preserve the Judeo-Christian understanding of the family unit, please refrain from turning the education of young children into a political arena. Thank you. As we do appreciate your efforts and we entrust you with our children, but we are deeply concerned about the LGBT curriculum that you may expose these innocent young children to. Yes, people are free to choose, but when they reach the age to do so, but we are writing you to raise our concerns that we do not want our children to be disturbed by this curriculum at this stage of life. Hello, to whom it may concern, my family and I are not interested at all in the LGBT curriculum. I heard it added to next year in some science and history lessons. I do not see it adding any benefit to my child education and ability to think. I would like to discuss my concerns with whoever in charge of this, please, and my girls out of this. Thanks and God bless. Hello, my name is Elizabeth Cortez, a parent from Ronald Reagan. My question for the board is about the new history and social studies curriculum. Is it going to be available online for parents to review? Thanks. Hello, my name is Lucy Sarkeys. Regarding teaching our kids about the LBGT at such a young age will cause confusion and disturbance to them. It is against all principles and morals that they have learned and they have been seen and lived by. You cannot teach the majority about things that the minority live with. Please, we urge you to stop teaching our children about LBGT. Hello, this is Silva Musa, and I would like to first thank the Director of Assessment, Curriculum, and Technology, Mrs. Gaby Parker, and her assistant Susan Ralph, for their quick response to, to contact me regarding an LGBT curriculum and send me samples to check the curriculum. And I've been informed I have the option to opt out my children from the lesson. I do not want to opt my children out of class. I want my children to be with their peers and not have to learn about LGBTQ. I don't want a curriculum that focuses on this. I urge you to choose a program that doesn't focus on this lifestyle so my children can be included. Thank you again for giving me the opportunity to speak up. To whom it may concern, my name is Sarah Blackoon, Backoon. I have three kids. I have a concern regarding an LBGTQ curriculum. I heard it will be included next year in history and science class. I don't see what great value this specific opinion-based and subjective content will add to my child's education or ability to think. I would like to set up a phone or in-person meeting with you to discuss your stance and what my options are. Thank you. To whom it may concern, I have a concern regarding an LBGT curriculum that may be going on to be included next year in history and science class. I don't see what great value this specific opinion-based and subjective content will add to my child's education or ability to think. I would like to set up a phone or in-person meeting to discuss your stance with you and what my options are. To whom it may concern, my name is Daywood. I have a concern regarding the LBGT curriculum. I heard it will be included next year in history and science class. I don't see what great value this specific opinion-based and subjective content will add to my child's education or ability to think. I would like to set up a phone or in-person meeting with you to discuss your stance and what my options are. To whom it may concern, my name is Narmeen K. Abrim. I have two kids in elementary schools. I have a concern regarding the LBGT curriculum. I heard it will be included in next year in history and science class. I don't see what great value this specific opinion-based and subjective content will add to my child's education or ability to think. I would like to set up a phone or in-person meeting with you to discuss your stance and what my options are. Thank you. Hello, this is Nasar Musa. I am a parent of three students in Grand Reagan Elementary School. My wife and I, when, when we decided to buy a house, we chose the Panama Buena Vista District here because we love the school districts and the opportunities provided to our children through wonderful teachers and programs. I am very concerned about the social studies and history framework that supports LGBTQ ideology. I do not want my young children exposed to these concepts, and I am unsure that this even has to do with their education. I am praying that the Panama Buena Vista Administrators and Board of Trustees will not adopt a social studies curriculum that supports this agenda, but rather has the interest of our children as the deciding factor. My six-year-old does not need to know about all the different family makeups. She needs to learn how to read, do math, and be a good student. I urge the board to review the curriculum carefully when approving something for our children. To whom it may concern, this is Nasat Gergis. I have a concern regarding the LBGTQ curriculum. I heard it will be included next year in history and science class. I don't see what great value this specific, uh, specific opinion-based and subjective content will add to my child's education or ability to think. Please, I am very concerned about this, and I don't like my child to get such, this kind of education. Thank you. This is from Eam Res. A caring parent of four kids, I have concerning regarding the LBGT curriculum. I heard it will be included next year in history and science class. I don't see what great value this specific opinion-based and subjective content will add to my child's education or ability to think. I would like to set up a phone or in-person meeting with you to discuss your stance and what your opinions are. To whom it may concern, my name is Waba, Waba. I have a concern regarding the LBGTQ curriculum. I heard it will be included next year in history and science class. I don't see what great value this specific opinion-based and subjective content will add to my child's education or ability to think. I would like to set up a phone or in-person meeting with you to discuss your stance and what my options are. Hello, my name is Haran Tafik. I have a daughter at sixth grade, and I have a concern regarding the LBGTQ curriculum. I heard it will be included next year in history and science class. I don't see what great value this specific opinion-based and subjective content will add to my child's education or ability to think. Please, I am very concerned about that, and I don't like my child to get such, that kind of education. To whom it may concern, my name is Mirian Alazabi, and I have two children, one daughter a fourth grade and a son in eighth grade. I have a concern regarding the LBGTQ curriculum. I heard it will be included in next year's history and science class. I don't see what great value this specific opinion-based and subjective content will add to my child's education or ability to think. I would like to set up a phone or in-person meeting with you to discuss your stance and what my options are. To whom it may concern, my name is Manar Hannah, and I have two children, one daughter in fourth grade and son in eighth grade. And I have a concern regarding the LBGTQ curriculum. I heard it will be included next year's history and science class. I don't see what great value this specific opinion-based and subjective content will add to my child's education or ability to think. I would like to set up a phone or in-person meeting with you to discuss what your options, excuse me, to discuss what your stance and what my options are. Is it safe to continue with the grab-and-go breakfast lunch with outside volunteers? Is there going to be extra precautions, training with outside volunteers handling out the food? It's great if the public wants to volunteer, but we need to be very cautious now that there are more cases of COVID-nineteen in our town, especially in the Southwest. I am very concerned, parent. I left a voicemail message yesterday at the PBV, PBV number because I received a call from someone saying you are visiting the students at home. I was not sure that was true, but I wanted to make sure. Please stop teaching the LBGT curriculum to our young children. It confuses them and is against the Bible teaching. Thank you. I would like to know why my child has been pushed off into a teacher they don't know, especially when they had a substitute teacher for the last five months. Why can we not stay with the teacher we had? Again, just phone number. This one was a bit much. The LA County Mayor has announced that their schools will be closed until May first. Do you see that happening with our schools here? When the first closure took place, we had one confirmed case here in Kern County. Today, we have fourteen confirmed cases. If schools reopen on the fourteenth, how are we protecting students? From a PBV USD teacher, a huge thank you to Kevin. He has handled this COVID ordeal with such grace and leadership. I appreciate the difficult decisions he has had to make and am thankful to work under such a dedicated leader. Thank you, Kevin, for leading us well during the season of unknown and for working hard for teachers and students alike. Thank you for your dedication to excellence in education, and that's our love to come.
Thank you, trustee Woolridge. We can't respond to these matters because, uh, they aren't on the agenda, but staff has logged all of these questions and comments, and appropriate, the appropriate people will respond. Moving on to reports from superintendent, staff, and board member reports. Thirteen A Superintendent's Report, Dr. Silverberg.
Well, thank you very much. Crazy times here in public education in our country, especially, um, about a week ago, school was paused and it changed the way we do school with no kids in the classrooms. Before kids left for this pause, they were handed, uh, majority of them were handed a, uh, series of, uh, work for two weeks, and that has worked for us well. But lifeless students, uh, has begun. And we are transitioning now. We're in a, a stage where we are creating the next go-around of packets for our students. And we look to create paper packets to the duration of the year if, uh, until students return this year. We, uh, we have deployed several surveys, and paper is very popular with our parents. So, uh, we know that paper can go in the back of the car while people are traveling. We know that, uh, people are very, uh, concerned about screen time. So, we do have curriculum going out, and, uh, we're gonna learn, we're gonna jump right into, uh, having school online. Uh, beginning next Monday and Tuesday, we'll be deploying our first series of Chromebooks out to our junior high students at their junior high school. Our biggest hurdle right now in Kern County is, does a student have a device and does a student have bandwidth? And for probably twenty-five percent or more of our students, they do not have either. And so, it's gonna be a real challenge to be equitable to our students who, on one hand, one part of our district, they have better technology in their bedroom than we do in the school. Uh, in another part of our district, they don't have internet, they don't have a device. So, that's our, our big tall mountain that we have to conquer. We've created two new words in the district, requisite and remote employees. Requisite are employees that we need here at school to make these things happen. Remote employees are those that are working at home. All you have to do is cruise through Twitter or Facebook or any social media, and you'll see the very creative things that our teachers are doing. And I would encourage you to do that because it's just amazing what happens each and every day. As far as our meal program, about seventy-five percent of our students are taking part in our grab-and-go program. The, that, uh, began at twenty-four sites. We, we, uh, began yesterday with reducing that down to ten sites instead of twenty-four. We did that with the, with the, the desire to build this for the duration. And we can support ten schools a lot better than we can twenty-four. In fact, we look to create two teams, one team working on one day, another team working on the next, and so the employee doesn't have to come each and every day. So, um, with that, we look to, um, get better at doing school without students here physically. Um, we are going to make an announcement tomorrow at noon, along with all the other Kern County schools, concerning the, uh, the new dates that, uh, are gonna be very important to our parents and to our students and to our staff. So, we will, we will be announcing that at noon tomorrow about, um, the rest of the school year. I would like to make a, a, a real quick shout-out to a couple of people, uh, so the board knows. In a little bit, you're gonna, you're going to be approving the consent agenda, and hidden deep in Human Resources is the approval of our new VAPA director. Amy McGuire is retiring in just a few, um, in just a few weeks, seven or eight, no, ten weeks, I think it is. And so, tonight, we have introducing him to the board, our new VAPA director in charge of our world-class, uh, Visual and Performing Arts, Mr. Steve Minier. Steve, stand up. Steve, if you wanna just take a second and kinda introduce yourself. Steve's a good old Kentucky boy, uh, and, uh, been with the district currently Vice Principal at Tevis.
Correct. Thank you for this opportunity. We are the gold standard in California, and I look forward, and I'm excited to continuing that. I would like to say if we are live or something, hi mom, we're watching the Kentucky. My, my family has decided to self-quarantine. Uh, my wife is a music, or I'm sorry, not music teacher, she's a kindergarten teacher who does music in her classroom. At Buena Vista Elementary, she's been with the district teaching for fifteen years now. I have a son who is a senior at Independence High School, and he is going to walk across the stage somewhere this year, whether it's at Independence High School or in my backyard. Uh, so, uh, kind of unfortunate for the class of twenty-twenty, but we'll get through it. Uh, and then I, last, I have a daughter who is a seventh grader at Tevis, and she is in every aspect of Visual and Performing Arts and loves it every day. Can't wait to get on the job, can't wait to, uh, have our music staff help with this healing process when we get back.
Thank you, Steve. And I'd also like to make a, uh, an announcement for our own Jerry Kinkade. She'd never tell you this. Jerry was, it was announced this week, the Association of California School Administrators, that Jerry Kinkade is the state central office administrator of the year for the state of California. So, congratulations to Jerry. And, uh, we all knew that was true in now California, and she'll be honored in San Diego, uh, in November of next year at the Acts of Conference. So, uh, we will be down there partying with Jerry and Clarence, and, and that will be a great, great, uh, just, uh, acknowledgement of all the things Jerry's done through the years. So, congratulations to Jerry. With that, we tried everything we could to make this, uh, meeting work, and we will post this meeting on YouTube, uh, following, uh, this meeting, so people can see what's going on. We know how to do that really well. And so, we will get better at, uh, this virtual meeting, which we'll probably have another one, uh, in April. So, we, we will, uh, know how to do a board meeting virtually a lot better. And that's all I have.
All right, well, thank you, Dr. Silverberg. Moving on to staff reports.
I have a question for Dr. Silverberg. And what's, how's the process working, um, as far as collecting those packets back? I've seen the good work that all, that all of you are doing, getting the packets out, but could you just tell, help me understand how we get it back, how the teachers get feedback back to the parents, to the students, since we're missing that face-to-face interaction, that, that teaching part of it, not just reading and doing the assignment.
Right. It's a great question in that, uh, in the old style of doing school, we had ho- ho- hospital home care, which kids would be given work, and a teacher would visit. We'd also have in- We'd also have independent study when kids would go on extended work, extended leave from the district. And we could capture ADA by them completing the packet. In fact, our auditors are very interested in that work being completed. There's no regulation at this point. There's no accountability from our state on the return of these packets and the work that they're doing. So currently, the kids are doing an awful lot of work. The very, very small districts, all the superintendents in Kern County get together just about every day. The very small districts of 250 or less, it's not an issue. They will get that work back and they'll get feedback. For the Bakersfield City, the Greenfields and the Panamas and the Kern High, it's a different story. And so again, there's no accountability for the kind of feedback that we would give normally in this situation. And so we're anxious to get into the digital world where those kids would get feedback automatically and very quickly. The feedback they might get this time would be maybe four or five weeks later. And that's not, that's not gonna be good. So that's where we are and it's a new day. All we have ever known is what the auditors require is for us to be accountable for the work the kids do. And so there is, there are no regulations on doing that.
And is it true that the governor postponed or eliminated the requirement for standardized testing at the end of the year? Did I see that?
Yeah, that's correct. And so there, there is no, what are the, Dr. Bianchi, what are the different tests that have all been postponed?
We know that they'll, the CAS test will not be held. The ALPAC, the test for English learners, is still under review. Should school come back in session, the deadline for administering has been extended. So we don't know that that's canceled. But we do know that they're looking very seriously at all the standardized tests to make sure that it's equitable for all students and that the results are valid. So at this point, CAS is the one that we know for sure won't be held.
Is, do we know of that regardless of whether or not school might resume this school year?
They, they have applied for a waiver from the federal government so that it does not have to be held at all.
Okay. I know we're in the early stages of this, but as we think through this, you know, if we don't do any sort of testing, we lose, you know, valuable trending data for us that we would normally use coming into next school year. So I would just encourage Dr. Silverberg and our, and our staff to think about what else could we do to get some data points, you know, between now and the start of next school year. I don't know whether that's using illuminate or some of the other tools that are not a federal type of test, but something. And so, because that trend data is important for our teachers so that they have that. So that would just be my advice.
Any other comments, questions?
No questions.
Thank you both very much. Moving on to 13B Staff Reports. We do not have any staff reports this evening. And 13C Board Member Reports. Do we have any board member reports this evening?
No, Mr. President.
I just have one. You know, I would like to take the opportunity to thank all of our district's staff and employees for their hard work over these past few weeks during the COVID-19 pandemic. And we surely are stronger together as we continue to work and adapt to this present structure. And a special thanks to Dr. Silverberg for his incredible leadership, not just for our school district, but for his leadership at the county level as well and all others who participated to accommodate, to serve our students first. Moving on to Consent Agenda. The board will be asked to approve all of the following items by a single vote unless any member of the board or of the public asks that any item be removed from the consent agenda and considered and discussed separately. Do I have a motion to approve tonight's consent, consent agenda?
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Trustee Wooleridge.
Second.
Second by Trustee Lake. We'll start with roll call with Trustee Lake.
Lake is a yes.
Dr. Haddock?
Yes.
Trustee Wooleridge?
Yes.
Trustee O'Ginn?
Yes.
Motion passes to pass tonight's consent agenda. Moving on to Old Business. 15A Second Readings of New and Revised Board Policies and Administrative Regulations. Ms. Kincaid.
Thank you. So I'm bringing to the Board of Trustees a second reading of new and revised board policies and administrative regulations. Trustees were briefed on these policies in a first reading on March 10th. This covers BP 3515.21 on drones, AR 6164.6 on identification and education under Section 504, and BP and AR 7140 Architectural and Engineering Services. Staff recommends approval at this time.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve?
I move that we would adopt these revised administrative regulations and board policies.
Second.
So we have a motion by Trustee Lake and a second by Trustee O'Ginn. Moving on to roll call, Trustee Lake?
Lake is a yes.
Dr. Haddock?
Yes.
Is a yes.
Wooleridge, yes.
O'Ginn, yes.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Moving on to 16. New Business, 16A Resolution Number 20-19, School Facilities Needs Analysis. Mr. Emke.
Thank you. Staff has brought to the board Resolution 20-19, School Facilities Needs Analysis. And this is in accordance with ED Code 17620 and Government Code Section 65995.5, 65995.6, and 65995.7. And what this does is with the board approval allows the district to use a Level 2 fee at $3.05. Currently, the statutory fee is $2.65 a square foot for residential property. And because the state bond funds are still available, the Level 3 fees are not allowable. But in the event there was not a state bond, those fees would be $6.09. Staff does recommend approval.
Okay, at this time, I would like to request a motion.
I move that we adopt the resolution.
Motion by Trustee Lake.
Second.
Second by Trustee O'Ginn. Moving on to roll call, Trustee Lake?
Lake is a yes.
Dr. Haddock?
Yes.
Dr. Haddock is a yes.
Wooleridge is a yes.
O'Ginn, yes.
Motion passes. Thank you very much, Mr. Emke.
Thank you.
Moving on to 16B Request for New Special Services Position, Educational Audiologist. And I will ask Mr. Johnson.
All right, thank you. Good evening. Tonight, through a collaborative effort, staff would like to provide, for the purpose of information only, the details related to a new position within the Special Services Department. Our goal tonight is not to request the approval, but instead for you hear the rationale and important details that will assist you in understanding the requests to add an educational audiologist position to our district. We realize that these are trying times and our crisis situation, which we're living in at the moment, and this is not the best time to present potentially a request for a position. But we also know that and understand that meeting the needs of all of our students continues to be our top and most important priority. Dr. Danita Mon, Sopa Executive Director of Special Services, has the best perspective regarding the needs of this position. So I'm gonna hand it off to Dr. Mon.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Is your microphone on, Danita?
I believe so.
Got a little green light?
There we go. All right, thank you. I'd like to give you some background on why I am bringing this position to you this evening. As you're aware, we spent a significant amount of time preparing to become a single district Sopa in July of 2019. We created many new positions in that process in order to provide high-quality special education services to our students and to provide those services as independently as possible. However, there were a handful of services and supports that we were not ready to provide in July of 2019. Therefore, we partnered with Kern County Superintendent of Schools to continue with the provision of those services. Among those services were the services provided by an educational audiologist. What we have found with the positions we created in the development of this Sopa is that having our own personnel providing services to our students rather than contracting with other LEAs or vendors really gives us the flexibility that we would not otherwise have. I'd like to give you an example of that. Last year, we created the position of Occupational Therapist. We now have three very, very talented occupational therapists or OTs. These people are giving constant advice and support and professional development to our staff. We've had the opportunity to embed occupational therapy services into our most intensive programs so that we could build the capacity for all of the educators working in those settings. It also allows us to increase the generalization of the skills that are taught to our students with those types of needs. The point I'm trying to make here is that there's value in having our service providers be district employees. If we were to hire our own educational audiologist, there are several services that they could provide for all students outside of those that are written into an IEP. They could provide hearing tests for our students. They could link families to hearing aid specialists. They could repair hearing aid equipment, including FM systems and the molds for hearing aids. They could assist our teachers with strategies to accommodate students with hearing difficulties as well as to maintain the classroom acoustics and the equipment that is provided for our students who have hearing impairments. Another reason to consider an internal educational audiologist has to do with cost savings. Okay, specifically, right now, we have 63 students who have audiological services on their IEPs. Because of our partnership with KC SOS, we pay $3,876 per designated instructional service. We call those DIS services. So when you do the math on that, we are expecting to pay over $244,000 for the provision of audiological services for our students with IEPs. So even at the highest range, if we brought someone in at the highest range of our proposed salary schedule, we would be looking at a 34% cost savings for the district. Finally, there's the benefit of acting now instead of waiting until July. As you can imagine, there are not a lot of educational audiologists out there waiting for positions. So in all likelihood, the person that we would be attracting would be someone working for another LEA. If we wait until July 1st, we'll lose our opportunity to hire someone for the coming school year because they'll be under contract. Therefore, I'm asking the board to support our efforts in continuing to provide high-quality special education services for our students with disabilities by supporting this new position. As Mr. Johnson stated, this position is being brought to you as an informational item tonight and we'll bring it back again in April for your approval.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions?
I have a couple of, I'm not gonna take the time this evening, but I would like to have a conversation with you, Dr. Mon, and you, Mr. Emke, probably via Zoom concerning this. I've already used it one with one of our administrators today and it worked out well. So we'll schedule something because I do have some questions specifically for each of you. Thank you.
Thank you both very much. Moving on to 16C Public Employee Appointment and Approval of Employment Contract. Job Title: Superintendent. As many of you are aware, we knew that our Superintendent, Dr. Silverberg, will be entering retirement come early August. Over the past year, the board has been working diligently to find a qualified candidate to be our next superintendent of Panama Buena Vista Union School District. Throughout this process, I can assure all of you, everyone here at the DICE has had very sleepless nights. As we know, this candidate had to be the right person to not only serve our students first, but a superintendent who could lead our district into the future. We are fortunate for the current leadership and innovative foundation that has been established. However, we as a board, know we are not done as we would like to continue to see our motto through in excellence in education. We looked for specific qualities about a candidate. We vetted those qualities, went to another level of vetting process, as you all know how we can be. We wanted a person who had the knowledge, experience level, and core foundation of not only being able to relate to us and understand where we are going as a district, but identify where we could make improvements, challenge us to become more efficient and effective, and lead our district's vision of where we would like to see it go for the next chapter to be the model school district in the state of California. The candidate we are offering this contract to is Mrs. Katie Russell from Fresno Unified School District. She has over 30 years' experience with Fresno Unified. She currently serves as Assistant Superintendent of School Leadership for the past nine years and has held many leadership roles in her tenure there. The board will now consider the appointment of our new superintendent and recommended final action on an employee contract. The proposed contract calls for the following compensation and benefits. An initial term ending June 30th, 2023, with the ability to extend for an additional year upon board approval following an overall satisfactory evaluation. A base annual salary of $231,000 based on a 224-day work year. Paid health and welfare benefits, same as those provided to certificated employees. Paid dues in three professional organizational, educational organizations. Paid annual medical examination, relocation expenses. Payment for up to 15 days in transition services before the start date to meet with the board members, staff, and stakeholders to work with the outgoing superintendent. And an allowance for professional consulting and facilitation services to be used to support the superintendent's work with senior administrative staff and the board. At this time, I would like to call a motion to approve the contract.
I move that we approve the contract as President.
Motion by Trustee Lake?
I second.
Second by Trustee O'Ginn. Roll call, Trustee Lake?
Lake is a yes.
Dr. Haddock?
Yes.
Dr. Haddock is a yes and I will say yes as well.
Wooleridge is a yes.
O'Ginn is a yes.
And do we have any comments this evening?
I do.
Mr. President, if I may, I have something I'd like to say.
Absolutely.
Hiring a new superintendent is a very meticulous and difficult task. We not only have to think about the staff, but we also have to think of the 19,000-plus students that attend this district and the needs of those students because they are our priority. With that in mind, I want to personally welcome you, Ms. Katie Russell, to the Panama Buena Vista Union School District.
to the Panama Buena Vista School District family. I sit here tonight very confident and pleased with our decision to appoint you as our new Superintendent. I am also very pleased to be part of this history being made here tonight. Not only are you our first female Superintendent in over 100 years, but our first African-American Superintendent. Today, I heard things from your colleagues like, "She is a true leader, highly respected, extremely approachable. I wish I had her as a mentor, follows through, brings folks together. You're getting a gem, inspiring, always coaching, built capacity, innovative thinker, makes visible voices from invisible voices. We are at a loss, can we just share her? In over 25 years of working with her, I've never heard a negative comment about her. With accolades like those mentioned above, how can I even begin to doubt our decision? It's impossible, and I know I will never doubt it. I can't wait to start working with you, and I hope that you are excited as we are about your transition to Bakersfield. Ms. Katie Russell, the students of the district deserve the best, and I truly believe we found the best. Thank you and welcome aboard."
Welcome, 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 welcome. We wish you were here, but again, we are practicing distancing. So on behalf of my colleagues and ourselves, welcome to Panama Buena Vista. We got a long way to go. We're going to support you. We're glad to have you, and we'll see you sooner than later, and let's hit the ground running. Welcome.
If I could, just a few thoughts for the benefit of, hi Katie. Turn around so Katie can see our fun setup and her new team. Just to let you in on a little bit of the behind the scenes over the last six or so months. We started this process while I was president. Greg has done a fantastic job carrying it all the way through across the finish line as well as the rest of the Board. We've all played a role in this. We had 17 very qualified applicants. Leadership associates, we felt, did a fantastic job of going out and finding the best and screening them for us. They presented, and we ultimately agreed to bring in four finalists. They were all highly qualified. And in some ways, it was a tough decision because they were all highly qualified. But Katie really shined in that day of final interviews. And it was clear and it was unanimous by the Board very, very, pretty quickly, actually. So some of the things that I was looking for when I wrote out my objectives late last fall was I wanted to see an instructional leader who could continue on the good work that all of you have been doing over the last three years that I've been a trustee. I wanted to find someone who was collaborative, relational, someone who would take us to the next level in math and work with all students at both ends of the special ed spectrum, our GATE and our, those with special needs and those with hearing impairment, for instance. I wanted, maybe most importantly, someone who would respect the culture and values of our district and our community. And while Katie is not from Bakersfield, I have no doubt in my mind that she's going to fit in very well here. And then lastly, someone who also would understand the importance of our visibly responsible background and tradition here. And we got that out on the table with her in the first meeting. And I know she's going to do outstandingly well in that area as well. So she has my full support as well as the entire Board. And we just started looking forward to a good transition period with her and Kevin. I know she's excited about that. And, you know, it'd be interesting to see how we put two forward-thinking people in the room for 15 days here, what might happen. But anyways, so thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you also very much. Congratulations, Mrs. Russell. All righty. Contract has been approved. Moving on to 17, Approval of Commercial Warrant Register. Do we have a motion? Trustee Haddock, as we all know, this is his favorite item. He has been the first person to motion for it tonight as he knows how it is important to approve to pay our bills. Do we have a second?
Seven.
Second by Trustee O'Ginn. Start with Trustee Lake?
Lake is a yes.
Dr. Haddock?
Yes.
Wooleridge is a yes.
O'Ginn is a yes.
Myself as well. Motion passes. Future Items. This is the time for Board members to request that items be placed on a future agenda. Any items? Moving on to Future Meeting. The next regularly scheduled board meeting will be held on Tuesday, April 21st, 2020, at 7:00 PM in the Boardroom unless otherwise announced. And moving on to Adjournment. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Motion by Trustee Lake, second?
Second.
Roll call?
Lake is a yes.
Dr. Haddock?
Yes.
Dr. Haddock is a yes, I am the F.
Wooleridge is a yes.
O'Ginn, yes.
Motion passes. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody, so very much.